Wrong.
I don't see Aman yet. Mayor Kaufman? Mayor Proton Bergen?
Here.
Councilmember Coombs? Councilmember Gardner?
Here.
Councilmember Drinsky? Councilmember Lawson?
Here.
Councilmember Marcano?
Present.
Councilmember Medina? Councilmember Mario?
Present.
Councilmember Sundberg?
Here.
And Councilmembers Avonik?
Here.
There's a quorum.
Um, announcement of the call in line.
City Council Study Session. If you are listening on the phone, please note public comments are not taken during study sessions. The phone line is in listen only mode. The City Council welcomes your comments at regular council meetings on both matters appearing on the agenda and during public invited to be heard. The phone line opens for sign up on those evenings at 6:00 P. M.
Is there a Spanish language version?
No, Mayor.
Okay, uh, I forgot to do this. Uh, a study session for Monday, August 15, 2022 is called the War. There's no mayor update. Are there any issue updates? Seeing none, I remember one C Alert Decal Pilot Program. Mayor Proton, Francois Berger.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so just in, to give you some background, in 2019, the Let's Talk Initiative in collaboration with Aurora Police Department and Aurora Fire Rescue, as well as Falk EMS formed an advisory council to create and launch a prepared and proactive educational approach to support communication between first responders and community members with complex communication needs called the Alert Decal Pilot Program. So it was going to launch in, um, in March of '22, but that was put on hold due to the COVID pandemic. So the, the board had voted to, to, um, to put it on hold and then, and then started to resume the program. So, uh, due to the APD and the AFD's search for new chiefs, the program's advisory council requested an opportunity to meet with the Aurora City Council regarding the value and the importance of the Alert Decal Pilot Program for our community. And with the Attorney General's consent decree and this nonprofit funding of the pilot program, um, I think will demonstrate the importance of, um, improving community relations. So I think it was just important that all of our council members were given the presentation. So speaking this evening is Lori Gimmstein, a speech, uh, language pathologist and executive director of Let's Talk Communication Access Initiative.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Bergen, for the introduction, and thank you, council, for the opportunity to present the Alert Decal Pilot Program. I'd like to go ahead and share some slides, um, so I think I can do that. Just a moment here. Okay. Is everybody able to see the screen uninterrupted?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great. Well, thanks again. It's such a pleasure to be here. Um, I just wanted to give you a little background about our organization. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization founded in 2016, right here in Aurora. And our mission is to support communication access for all by supporting children and adults with really complex communication needs to actively participate in their lives at home and at school, at work, and in the community via what we call Augmented and Alternative Communication Systems, or AAC. All of our programs are open to the general population at no cost, and our entire staff is composed of volunteers. Um, all of the funding that we receive from donations and, and community sponsorships goes directly to programming like the Alert Decal Program. And we have participants across the nation and internationally, which is really exciting. And I'd love for you guys all to check out our virtual and in-person programs and events at our website at letstalkinitiative.org. We'd love to have you join us for an upcoming event. So, uh, in 2019, in, in the concept of this Alert Decal Pilot Program arose from many conversations that we were having with our members who have complex communication or functional access needs about really poor interactions that they had experienced due to ineffective communication with first responders in emergency situations that led to very poor outcomes. And we had multiple meetings to discuss possible solutions to address this issue. So we created this concept of a two-tiered educational approach that supports both our community members with complex communication, functional access needs, and our first responders. Now, prior to the COVID-19 pandemic and all the fun that that created, we were able to collaboratively partner with Aurora Police, Fire, Falk, and Falk EMS and our community members with these needs to identify areas that we could support through education. And at that time, um, our advisory board surveyed our first responders and found the following. Um, almost seventy-five percent of our respondents indicated that they had not received adequate training in their role as a first responder to effectively communicate with someone who has complex communication needs secondary, secondary to sensory or motor, physical, behavioral safety, cognitive learning issues, or neurological needs. And then sixty percent of these responders also indicated that they were not able to successfully determine when they arrived on scene if a person would require the use of alternative or augmented forms of communication to support their expressive language or their understanding of language, such as like high-tech communication devices, low-tech picture boards or text boards, sign language, the use of eye gaze or other forms of communication. And seventy, almost seventy-nine percent of responders indicated that a visual aids, such as an alert decal placed on vehicles, residences, schools, businesses, et cetera, would really help to increase their ability as a first responder to effectively react and serve the needs of a person who had complex communication or functional access needs. So to supplement our data collection, we spent a lot of time with members of the Aurora Police Department and Falk EMS and Aurora Fire Rescue to observe and assess information that they were collecting on scene. So we would, we would meet with them, we would travel on scene, we would, uh, observe, uh, what was happening when they were interacting with a community member, you know, if it was an EMS call, if it was a fire rescue call, a police call. And, and what we, we found was that our community members with complex communication or functional access needs were not likely to be prepared to effectively communicate with our first responders about their communication, mobility, and medical needs. And so in 2022, we recognize and understand that our community is dealing with multiple challenges stemming from the COVID pandemic, including staff shortages, uh, changes in legislation, and changes in community needs. Uh, we, we strongly believe the Alert Decal Pilot Program is of great value to our city. Our Police, Fire, and EMS department leadership saw the need for improvement and education in 2019, and they committed their staff to our advisory board. And today, our current advisory board, which can, is consisting of a lot of new members because our old advisory board has either A. left their departments or moved into different positions within the department. So now we have, uh, new additions from each department on our advisory board, but they continue to see an ever-increasing need to support our community members and our first responders. And I do recognize, we recognize that the words tentative and flexible are our guiding principles in the rollout of this program. And we really wanted to come to City Council today asking for your support. Originally, our target was to have the entire city of Aurora participate in the pilot study, but with the challenges I just mentioned, uh, we'd, we'd really like your consideration and thoughts on potentially supporting piloting the study in one or two wards versus all six wards in the city of Aurora. And with that said, I'd like to just give you a brief overview of the goals of our program and what we call the Ask Me Guidelines. So the Ask Me Guidelines and the Alert Decal Program is a prepared and proactive approach to supporting communication in an emergency. So from this point forward, I'm going to try to say the ADPP for Alert Decal Pilot Program. So this is a two-tiered approach that assists our community members with complex communication and functional access needs and our first responders. So our community members receive an Alert Decal Program Packet. And we have a whole system all set up for how these packets get out to the community that can share with you at a later date. But in these packets, they, um, they were put together, this was actually part of a Eagle Scout project in our city, um, and they receive this information card that is very specific to the Alert Decal Program that I'll talk about shortly. And they also receive two of the Alert Decals. They're highly reflective, um, and first responders are trained when they see these on scene how to react. And these decals, I'll tell you how they're all used shortly. Um, and then we provide our community members with instructional support in a hybrid model. So we have support set up to serve the community to ensure that they have the opportunity and access to participate in this program. Our first responders also will participate in a hybrid professional development program. Um, and in that program, they learn the Ask Me Guidelines. And this is kind of the magic piece of the program in addition to the information card that gives our first responders just this easy five-step guideline. Ask Me is an acronym that stands for the things that they can do to support effective communication in an emergency. And so, um, it's a really, uh, easy approach, uh, to supporting both our community members and our first responders, and then improve communication in an emergency. The goals of our program are, one, we want to support our community members that have communication needs secondary to, as I said before, sensory issues, motor, physical, behavioral safety, cognitive learning, neurological needs. We want our community members to be prepared. We want them to be proactive. We want them to be able to be in an emergency situation and have their needs met. And that is done through educational supports and guidance to participate in the Alert Decal Program. Our second goal is we want to visually alert our first responders that a person they are assisting has communication needs or functional access needs secondary to these issues and may require augmentative or alternative forms of communication to help support their ability to express themselves and to support their understanding of language. And you can see here, um, we have, uh, Fire on scene and Aurora PD on scene. And you can see that their, the first responders are pointing to the Alert Decal. So they're, they're immediately going back to their training to how they're going to react when they see that Alert Decal on scene. Um, and that's going to really help them, really to effectively determine actually what's happening on scene, which can be, um, from the discussions that I've had with Fire and EMS and police is, you know, these, these men and women are really doing an incredibly important job. And to have anything that would assist them to know that where they're going, they, they have a better way to communicate effectively with people. Uh, so the next one is to provide the educational supports that are necessary to assist our first responders' ability to successfully interact with children and adults who have these needs by strengthening their understanding and use of how to use low and high-tech AAC systems. And that's part of their professional development training. And we also want to help first responders to gain confidence in their ability to comfortably interact with a person who uses AAC to support improved outcomes in an emergency. It is one hundred percent normal not to know what to do when you meet somebody that has complex needs. And so what we want to do is we want to break down that barrier of being uncomfortable by providing our, our first responders with the supports they need to be effective. And we want to provide education to increase a first responder, first responders' awareness of interventions and supports they can use to manage the environment to support a person they are assisting who has complex needs. So kind of jumping into the packet that our community members receive. And again, this is a volunteer program. And, um, what is, one of the data points that we're going to be evaluating with this program is how many community members sign up. So our goals are, we have to be very thoughtful in how we would roll out this program. You know, if we, uh, to make sure that community members were aware of it. But it's a really important data piece because we do see, um, especially today, after the last couple of years, a lot of outcry for support in the communities in regards to interactions with first responders. So this is a really important data piece to see how many of our community members are going to sign up. Um, and we hope to see a lot of participation in that. So each, uh, community member will receive this Alert Decal Packet, as I said. And on the very front of it are the eight steps to participate. So again, this was all created in 2019. It's been a couple of years. Uh, we have new people on our advisory board. We have new leadership. And so it's, it's almost like this, what, you know, what is this program? Because the people that were involved in 2019 aren't necessarily all here today. But these, these steps were very carefully thought out. Um, we had multiple meetings designing this program. And the, we work with Aurora Police, with our power officers. Uh, we make sure our community members know how to fill out their information card and where to put it. We make sure that our community members place these information cards in three locations. One on their refrigerator in their home, because our first responders are trained to go there in a residence when they see that Alert Decal on the front door. We ask them to put one in their glove box in their vehicle because when a first responder sees the decal on the window, they're going to know that they have supports in that glove box on how to help support somebody in that vehicle. And they want one in their go bag. And so a go bag is something we should all have. And I bet probably no one on this call has one, um, because that seems to be a common thread. Pretty high prevalence of nobody having their go bag ready. Uh, but we teach our community members how to create a go bag so that they have, and on the back of this card is actually some of the items that they need to include in their go bag and where they should store their go bag. And then we instruct them on how to put the decals on. And then we ask them to, um, scan this QR code. And if they need assistance with that, we have assistance, um, to help them so that they can register as a volunteer participant in this study. On the inside of the card is kind of where the magic happens. On the right side is your normal in case of emergency information. And, and that stuff is extremely useful, especially if you're going to the emergency department and want our, our EMS paramedics to be able to communicate that to the ED. Um, but on the left side is kind of this, this part where our first responders, they don't have this information. They don't know. So if you don't, if you have limited to no verbal speech and you don't communicate yes and no verbally, how do you do that? So we teach our first responders using the Ask Me Guidelines to find out this information. But in addition, it's in the information card. So you can see here Lauren, who's a young woman in the Let's Talk Initiative. Uh, she has spastic quadriplegic cerebral palsy. Um, her go bag location is in the trunk of her car. So if she's traveling, traveling in her vehicle, it's in the trunk. Um, but if not, it's always on her wheelchair. So that way, first responders know that if she's being transported, they need to take that go bag with them. We train them to do that. And then the top, the next two boxes are how do I say yes and how do I say no? And so she communicates yes by lifting her left knee, and she communicates no by shaking her head left to right. And then she goes into some description to help first responders with how she communicates, how to help her with her mobility needs, and how to help her stay calm, how to help manage her environment. And I'm, I'm not going to go into, I'm not going to read all these for you, but these are specific to every person, and these are incredibly helpful. We've done a lot of, um, beta studies with, you know, going in and doing these setups with our first responders with Police, Fire, and EMS. They've all been through, um, all the, we've tried multiple different opportunities. And these are the four areas that we've determined are the most impactful for improving successful communication in an emergency. On the back of the program, like I described, is a brief description of the program. There's a description of things you need to include in your go bags, such as copies of your insurance cards, um, extra clothing, medications, money, toiletries, food and water, personal items, low-tech communication boards, uh, chargers and batteries for any equipment that you may be using, glasses, hearing aids, other medical equipment, support for your animal, uh, support animal supplies, um, and any additional medical information that's not on this information card. Um, and then also some ideas for where your go bag should be located. And then these next few slides, it's just the Ask Me Guidelines, really simple. So originally, when we were designing this program, we're like, do we need to teach about every type of congenital developmental or acquired disability, et cetera? And then we decided, no, that, that's not necessary. We can come up with something simple that can be used in many situations effectively. And this Ask Me came out, came from our very first advisory meeting at Capstick. And, uh, all of our, our members are like, you know, it sounds like what everybody's saying is Ask Me. And that was originally going to be the name of the program was Ask Me. And it just so happened to turn into this wonderful acronym for the supports that our first responders can employ. And we actually use this same guidelines in other areas as well. So we, we do many other programs. The Alert Decal Program is just one program that the Let's Talk Initiative does. Um, and before 2020, we were involved in public service campaigns. We were working with the schools. We were bringing all this information in to teach our community how to use something similar to this so that they could build relationships with our community members with complex needs. But A stands for Acknowledge the Alert Decal and Locate the Ask Me Information Card in a Predictable Location. So those three predictable locations again are the refrigerator, the glove box, and the go bag. And since this is a joint training, all of our team is going to know. And now we, we're also working, um, with Aurora 911. Um, and because we have some additional layers that I'm going to share with you that have, um, come out in the last two years of just growth. Um, but those are the three locations that our team can go in and find this information card. And then the S in Ask, in the Ask Me is show me how you say yes and show me how you say no. So here you see, um, our paramedic asking the patient to show me how you say yes and show me how you say no. And we teach our first responders how to observe. You know, some people communicate yes with an eye blink or maybe a move of a pinky finger. You have to be observant to watch, um, how this is done. Um, and so here you can see the paramedic observes the patient that he's helping. He notices that the patient lifted her left knee when he asked her how she says yes, and she shook her head from left to right when he asked her how she said no. The K is no and confirm what was communicated. So, um, when we ask, how do you, show me how you say yes and, and show me how you say no, we've found through our data collection when we're on scene that the majority of questions first responders are asking are yes/no questions. So if you have an effective yes/no established, you are going to have a much better outcome than if you think that the person that you're working with is being combative, um, or, you know, might, is maybe under the influence of our narcotic. Um, so we, we know that this, establishing this yes/no response is critical. So here he knows and he acknowledges, he confirms what was communicated. And he, he says, I noticed that when I asked you to say yes, you lifted your left knee. When I noticed how you say no, you shook your head left to right. And the patient confirms this by lifting her left knee. M is managing the environment to support needs. And this is kind of another magic piece of this program. So using the information that's in the go bag and on the information card, our first responders on scene are much better able to provide supports necessary to support a person's sensory needs, behavioral needs, motor or mobility needs, communication and or cognitive needs. Um, and this is really critical. Uh, we have about four percent of our population that has complex needs. And we, and we want to make sure that we are, um, working together collaborative, collaboratively to support, um, them in their time of need. So some of these things include access to interpreter services, access to low-tech communication boards that might have picture symbols on them to help, um, comprehension and explain things. Something as simple as speaking clearly and slowly. Something as simple as speaking clearly and slowly. There's a wonderful card put forth by the Center for Development and Disability at the University of Mexico called Tips Card, which actually is a flip chart to provide you information on a variety of congenital developmental and acquired conditions, using effective listening, using the Ask Me Guidelines, always paying attention to a person's gestures, nods, sounds, eye gaze and eye blinks. Always asking questions one at a time, giving people extra time to respond. And even something as simple as having a whiteboard or paper and pencil available for writing, if, if that's something that can be used. And then the E is explain what and why. This was the biggest area of concern for our Let's Talk members in, in these meetings is that oftentimes what we've noticed, and we noticed in our beta testing, when we would, we would just have, we would just ask first responders to do what they normally would do. When they come on scene with somebody that has limited to no verbal speech, the first responder, their reaction is to go silent as well. And then they start doing things without explaining what they're doing or why they're doing it, which is really, they're not intending to cause harm, but it's, you know, it's, it's an invasion of privacy. And it's, we, we want to make sure that our first responders realize like, okay, let's, let's explain what and why we're doing something instead of just doing something to someone. So here you see that our paramedic is augmenting his verbal speech to complete a physical assessment. He's using augmentative communication supports. He supports like gestures. He can use sign language, communication displays with picture symbols and or real photographs, alphabet boards, high tech communication devices with voice output software, using interpreters, translators or other forms of communication to explain what and why. So here he's like, I'm going to first check your head, then I'm going to check your chest and then I'm going to check your abdomen. And you can see that the patient is engaged and understands what's happening. And had he not done that, so what happened in the first situation before we did this, Lauren, who has spastic quadriplegic cerebral palsy, he immediately went to start evaluating her and she went into extensive reflection. So you can see the benefit of the E in Ask Me to explain what and why. So again, these are just the guidelines. I'm not going to repeat them. And we are super fortunate to collaborate with two really phenomenal agencies, Rapid SOS and Vitals Aware Services. These are great companies doing great work. And we are going to, we want to work with them in this pilot study because we see the benefit of adding, providing the opportunity for additional types of supports for community members that may want them, especially when there is access to data. So these two agencies have capitalized on digital capabilities that are available nationwide to help our first responders receive vital information to support the people that they are serving on a secure platform. And they've generously offered their programs at limited to no cost to provide participants in the ADPP with additional options to be prepared and proactive in an emergency situation. So Rapid SOS is the world's first emergency response data platform. And that securely delivers critical real time data to 911 to really empower smarter and faster emergency response. It's used in over 5,200 public safety agencies, including in our city. And the Rapid SOS Portal and Rapid SOS Integrations link data from connected device like your smartphone and sensors directly to first responders during emergencies. And then our other collaborative partner is Vitals Aware Services. This is a real time digital medical ID app. It's phenomenal. It offers subscribers the ability to create a profile with critical information about their medical, mental health or invisible conditions that securely delivered real time through the Rapid SOS data platform to 911 dispatch and authorized first responders. Another really wonderful thing that they offer is a Bluetooth fob that attaches to clothing, shoes or a bag and instantly notifies a first responder that comes within 80 feet radius of that vitals beacon. And that first responder is an authorized first responder, so that the agency has given them a, agency cellphone. It has a secure app on it. And so, and then when that person with the beacon moves out of that 80 foot radius, the notification disappears. So the use of this secured technology, combined with what we're doing with the Let's Talk Initiative and, and our community and our first responder training, it really helps reduce misunderstanding during medical and mental health emergencies. And that's what our goal is. Our goal is to improve what's happening in our community. So I'd like to open the floor to questions, if you have them. Thank you again for your time. I appreciate it. I'm going to see if I can stop sharing.
Questions of the Mayor, Brett Tam or the Speaker?
Mayor.
Mayor?
Sorry, Councilman Gardner.
So I don't know if this is necessarily for the Speaker or for, well, maybe part of it is. But so to, kind of a two part question first. Aurora doesn't, well, only has limited control over our EMS service. We use a third party private company. So how are we going to compel them to do this training? And then my next question is, and this is probably for Chief Oates and Chief Robnett. What, what is the training going to look like? Because training, you know, roughly 1,200 first responders is not like, it doesn't take a weekend. That will take months and months. And so what is that process going to look like?
I'd like to take a stab at the training piece, if I may. Because I haven't met with Chief Robnett and Chief Oates yet. So with the training piece, originally like we described, we were, we were talking about doing a citywide rollout and that would require training of all the first responders. And it's about probably an hour and a half to two hour training. And again, because this is a pilot study, we want the opportunity to work with our first responders to find out, you know, what pieces of the educational component are helping, what are not helping? That's part of collecting data for effective results and ensuring that if, if this pilot study is successful, the ultimate goal is to create a webinar that's accessible online. And again, the training is about an hour and a half to two hours. So I had spoken with Chief Hayes over at Aurora Fire Rescue. We were kind of contemplating, looking at different training times at Capstick. And to train all of the fire rescue, it was about, it was two sessions a week. Two, two sessions a day, two days a week, so that we could have four trucks offsite in a row. So it's 16 fire at a time. And we would have all of the fire rescue team and FALC EMS would be collaborating, collaborating with that training by the end of October. So we were looking at between September and October. So it was about a two month.
If Councilmember Gardner directed his question to Chief Robnett, AFR, I wonder if Chief Robnett, are you on?
And may, may I just say something real quick?
Please.
I think, you know, Lori, we didn't want to get into the weeds into the training because Councilmember Gardner, you're correct about, about, you know, we need to work through obviously our staff shortages. How many people can we train? What would that look like? So I think Lori's team is, is flexible in working with, with our police and our fire and 911 to make sure to accommodate their, their needs, but also to shrink it down and or scale it down to one ward or two wards as a pilot instead of the whole entire city. And then create a virtual type of platform, like a webinar that could be rolled out much easier.
Mayor Brett Tam, what is he ask?
It's just support, supportive of the, the idea of the program.
For moving forward. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. And I'm supportive of, of the concept. I just, I, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is the logistics of the training because it's, it's not as easy as it's being described. And the list, especially for the police, is growing longer by the day of things that, you know, they have to do training on. And if you take firefighters or police officers out of service to do training, that's calls for service for residents that potentially go unanswered and or take longer to respond to. And so I, I just, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of the concept. It sounds like a good idea, but I feel like we're not taking into account what that training is going to look like. Because I don't know how we could only do it for certain parts of the city. I mean, maybe we could only train certain districts, I guess, certain firehouses. But people move around. We have mandatory overtime where they fill in at another station. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts there. It's August 15th. I don't think the end of October is realistic. You know, like I said, I'm supportive of the concept, but I just, I don't feel like the training aspect of it has been thought through for 750 police officers and 450 firefighters, not to mention the paramedics from FALC. I don't think that's doable in 45 days. So that's it.
If I can offer a comment, Mayor? Everything that everyone has expressed is, is on the money, including comments by Councilman Gardner. The bottom line is it's a very worthy program and we would find a way over time to get the training done. We, we talk, I've, I've heard discussions about a pilot. Obviously, the easiest way in the police department to pilot a program is to start it in one precinct, one district. But we could somehow make this happen over time as long as everyone is patient. There are extraordinary demands on the department every day now to add training. A lot of it has to do with the consent decree. And, and those demands, I don't expect to, to decrease for at least two years. But we could fit this in and make it work because it's such a worthy program as long as everyone has patience about how we work it in and get everyone eventually trained. So I, I embrace the notion of a pilot. And on the PD side, the easiest way to do that is to target one particular district to start, if that's helpful to the conversation.
Further questions of, of the Speaker or of the Mayor Brett Tam?
Mayor, this is Director Manet. May I speak? I just want to echo Chief Oates' comments and support, and support them. Obviously, we have a lot of moving parts in the city and Aurora 911 also embraces that. Just leveraging the technology that we have though, I do think that Aurora 911 might be a good ground zero to begin introducing the idea of sharing this information and awareness. So however that pilot looks like on the field responder side, we can begin leveraging the technology. We are in the process of transitioning to a new computer aided dispatch system. And we will be live on that system in September. That system will allow us to directly import emergency health profile file information from Rapid SOS into a CAT event. And so as we, you know, as fire and police determine the best pace for rolling out the pilot program or beginning to training their personnel, we can already be ahead of the curve by introducing that information, incorporating it into the information that we share with field responders for awareness building purposes and then just lay that foundation to build on.
Further questions? Is there opposition? I'm sorry.
Mayor, yeah, I just had a couple of quick questions. So I think this is really important for folks to have this AAC information. I have worked with a lot of folks who use AAC and it's very wonderful that you're bringing this forward. I do have a question in terms of the logistics that are being discussed. I wonder if there's an ability to work with the community center boards to determine, so developing the pathways and working on human services to determine which ward might have kind of a good starting population for, for doing the initial pilot in Ward of Ward, like starting in Ward. Because there are folks certainly all over our city, but maybe there was some concentration where it would make the most sense. And then my other question is about the, the beacon program that you were talking about at the end. I guess my question and concern there is about privacy, right? If someone doesn't have a need to be interacting with the first responder, does the first responder have a need to be having all of that information about them pop up? And then be accessing that information?
Great questions. Thank you very much. I, I think for the second part of that question, I'm going to refer to Stan if, if he is able to unmute and answer. Stan is with Vitals Awareness Services?
Hi, thank you for having me. Can you hear me? Great. So our program is 100% voluntary. We, we won't, you know, nobody forces anybody to put in information. You have to voluntarily do it. And, and so that's how we get around that. If somebody doesn't want to have the information shared with first responders, they, they definitely don't have to. They also get to customize how they write the profile. If there's ways of, of saying things that's going to help them, we recommend they put that in there. If there's things that are said that is going to do them harm, they definitely don't need to put that in there. So it's all voluntary, all voluntary and nothing is forced.
Just a quick follow up, Mayor?
Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Is there any way for them to customize like when they share and don't share? So that they're not just always having that information sharing out, but maybe only when they feel that they may need to share that information with someone? Or does it have to be at all times, anytime they're in proximity to a first responder?
That's a great question. Because, because you never know when an emergency is going to happen. It, it doesn't, it's not like that. Now, if, if you really want to have a situation where you, you aren't going to share information, then that person doesn't have to carry their beacon with them that day, that fob with them that day. But, you know, the way things work, you never know when it's going to happen. So, so, so this is one of those situations where you make a decision. You know, there's life and death situations. There's situations where somebody really needs help and they have to kind of weigh their options on, on what kind of information they share.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Mayor?
Say. I'm sorry.
Mayor, Councilmember Gardner, thank you. And thank you for the presentation. I think this is a really exciting program. And my question is, would this apply to the Aurora Mobile Response Team as well in terms of training?
Can you tell me, I'm not familiar with the Aurora Mobile Response Team. Is that the, the new community component?
Yeah, that's our non-law enforcement response team.
Yeah, excellent. Yes, the training really would, would, that's, this is the key piece, right? Like we're, we want to be very flexible and we want to look at where we're missing things. Because that's what a pilot study really supports is, you know, where are areas that we need to include or maybe not include anymore? And that would be a great area of cross-training for sure. And I also just wanted to mention to Councilmember Coombs, part of your first question is, you know, are we willing to work with organizations like developmental pathways and ARC and Colorado Cross Disability Coalition and Emergency Services for Children, all of those agencies, absolutely. We want to educate them on the program and have them be a part. And also just to mention with your question in regards to the beacon, that, that the use of Rapid SOS and the Vitals Aware Services are kind of layered approaches. And again, it's like, like Stan was saying, it's all voluntary. So whatever the level of support you're most comfortable with, that's the level of support that you would choose.
Further questions?
Mayor, Commander Hayes from Aurora Fire.
Yes, please proceed.
Good evening. Just wanted to chime in with two portions of this. Aurora Fire Rescue is supportive of this initiative. I am new to my position. As Lori had mentioned earlier, there's a couple of us in new positions. So I'm just learning about what's involved with this. And to Councilmember Gardner's question about training, we've looked at numerous training options. There's also the possibility for doing video based learning, which we can do recordings of. And I can then disseminate on our LMS platform to the individuals in areas, in stations or in whole battalions, which does not require them to be out of service, but it can get accomplished while they're in station in their off times, which reduces the out of service time and maintains that level of standard of care to our community. So I hope that kind of clears a little bit up for you.
Further questions? I see none. Is there opposition to moving one seat forward? I see no opposition. One seat will move forward. Consent calendar out of number 2A. Is there objection to moving the consent calendar forward out of number 3A? Seeing none, out of number 2A will move forward. Out of number 3A, resolution to decline participation in the family and medical leave insurance program. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's item is a resolution. It's a, it's an opportunity that's afforded to municipalities in the state to decline participation in the family and medical leave insurance program, the Family Act that recently passed statewide. And essentially, the reason why the City of Aurora, in my opinion, should opt out is because the benefits that we offer to city employees for family and medical leave are actually greater than what are afforded under this act. I think it's important to point out, just in case there is confusion for any members of the public watching, this does not apply to other employers in Aurora. This is strictly for City of Aurora employees. this does not apply to other employers in Aurora. This is strictly for City of Aurora employees, um, that this would apply to. And again, it's because the benefits that we offer are greater. Um, I, I think Jen, um, from the Human Resources Department is going to do a short presentation, um, just about the benefits under this program compared to what the city offers and the process for opting out. Um, but, uh, so that's all I really had to say as an introduction and I will turn it over to Jen.
Thank you and good evening, uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. I am Jen Lorenzen, Deputy Director of Human Resources, and I am going to quickly review, um, some information on the Family Paid Leave Act. Um, as a quick, can you all see my screen?
Yeah.
Yes.
There we go. Um, as a quick reminder, the family leave was created by Proposition 118, which was voted on and approved by Colorado voters in November of twenty twenty. It is a paid family leave that provides up to twelve weeks of paid time off for qualifying reasons. Reasons such as care of a new child, whether that's through birth, adoption, replacement, personal or family serious health condition, arrangements for family members' military deployment, domestic violence, sexual assault, and additional time for complications in pregnancy and childbirth. It is a leave that would run concurrently with FMLA and has a maximum benefit capped at one thousand one hundred dollars a week. That is based on a sliding scale determined by employees' average weekly wage. Although it is a state-funded program, the program is paid for by fees collected from both the employee and the employer. The nine point nine percent premium is split fifty-fifty between both the employee and the employer. Local governments do have the option to decline or opt out of participating in this leave program. It does require procedures to opt out, which does take some time, which is why we've initiated the conversation with you this evening. When we look at reasons for why the city might opt out, we first look at the job protected leave options that the city is already providing. So currently we provide a family medical leave FMLA, which allows for up to twelve weeks of leave time. Additionally, we have an employee medical leave, which allows for up to one year of time off. We have military leave and time away for addiction treatment and rehabilitation under our CARs program, the City of Aurora Addiction Rehabilitation Services. In addition to these job-protected leaves that the city offers, we do have paid benefits available to employees through paid leave accruals, which is annual sick and personal leave, Healthy Families Workplace Act, both short and long-term disability, military leave and differential pay, emergency leave, bereavement leave, and funding for employees on the CARs leave. When we look at this list, we can see the city already provides paid leave in excess of what the family leave program would provide. Now, should the city choose to opt out of family coverage, it would require a resolution asked by city council. If the city does intend to opt out, this declaration vote by city council must occur prior to January first of twenty twenty-three. And that's because come January first, the city would start taking contributions from employees. Actions that would need to be taken prior to city council voting, um, requires us to provide public notice and give employees the opportunity to submit comments to city council through a public process. Actions that would be taken after a city council vote would include formal notification to the Division of Family and Medical Leave Insurance, as well as providing written notification to employees. This notification would include the city's decision to opt out and the impact of what that would have on the family leave, as well as a comparison on the differences between the off, the benefits offered by family and city paid benefits. We would additionally post, um, required posters and notices in all of our city facilities. It is important to note that the decision to opt out is not permanent. Um, participation may be reconsidered annually, but at a minimum needs to be reconsidered every eight years. In the absence of a vote to further decline coverage after those eight years, the city would become a covered, um, employer automatically. And if at any point the city did opt in to providing family paid leave, it must commit to remaining in the program for a minimum of three fiscal years. Uh, the suggested timeline on moving forward if the city were to opt out, we did meet with the Management and Finance Policy Committee on June twenty-eighth, uh, which leads us to our meeting with you this evening. Um, if we were to move forward, we would provide notification to employees of the upcoming vote and how they could submit public comments and, um, tentatively proposing taking it to a regular city council meeting on September twenty-sixth. So the question for you all this evening is, um, does council support the family opt-out resolution? Move to a regular council meeting?
Questions of staff?
Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Coombs.
Um, yeah, so I had just a couple of questions. The first one is, do we have any sense of how the point nine percent split between the employee and capital compares to the amount of money that the city currently pays in to the short-term and long-term disability?
Yes, that is a good question. I do have, um, Ryan Lance on with us this evening, Director of Human Resources, and he does have some of the cost impact numbers to provide.
Thanks, Jen. Yeah, our short-term disability for next year, for twenty twenty-three, would cost the city about one million dollars to provide that coverage. Um, the anticipated and the calculated cost for family leave would be about one point one million dollars. So it would cost more from a city contribution to participate in the family leaves with less of a benefit for employees.
Okay, and then my other question is, do we have a sense, cause I know there's a two-week period where employees would have to use leave banks. So if an employee was out of personal, annual, other leave bank and they were to have to take those first weeks unpaid before they get the short-term disability? Um, how does that compare to the employee contributions that for, we'll say, average or median pay for an employee?
So for the two-week gap before disability would kick in, if an employee got to the point where they had already exhausted any of the leave options provided through either their annual or personal days, the city does have a leave-sharing program where they can request for coworkers to share any accrued leave time that they have available in their banks. This is a program that has been utilized. Um, it's my understanding that over the last two years or so, we've really only had a handful of employees that have needed to request leave share to cover the two weeks, um, due to them personally not having accrued leave time.
Further questions? I see none. Is there any, uh, opposition to moving item number three A forward? Uh, seeing none, item number three A will move forward. Item number three B, resolution expects the city council's strong support of land acknowledgement, uh, Sarah Valencius?
Yes. Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for having me. In your packet, I've provided a one-page overview of the land acknowledgement that we are seeking support for. But just as a brief overview, um, a land acknowledgement is really just a formal statement, um, that demonstrates our commitment as a city um, in recognizing and honoring and respecting indigenous peoples, um, as their original stewards of the land. And it's a great way for us to introduce our respect and support, as well as beginning a commitment to authentic and important relationships dedicated to equity and inclusion in our city. Um, these are fairly common. You might have seen a number of organizations within the Denver metro area and throughout Aurora, um, adopting land acknowledgement statements that will really, um, or that are designed to be read at the beginning of formal gatherings, just so that we can honor our past and present, um, and the history that, that we are fortunate to live and work on. At the bottom of the one pager, I've placed the land acknowledgement language, so I would hope that you have an opportunity to take a peek at that. Um, but we are really just looking for strong support of adopting this land acknowledgement to be read at our major events and organizations. Um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, um, at this time.
Uh, just one question, the city attorney. Somebody from the city attorney's office present.
Yes, Mayor. Oh, Angela Garcia is here, so I'll let her answer the, answer your question, dear honor.
I know there's been litigation nationally in terms of, you know, uh, private lands. And is, is this any way binding or does it in any way infer, uh, anything, uh, beyond respect?
Good evening, Mayor Hoffman. Um, as Dan said, this is Angela Garcia of the city attorney's office. Uh, Mayor, this is nothing but, um, respect for land and acknowledging that it's for indigenous peoples. It, it has no, uh, claim on the land being, uh, accrued by the city.
Okay. Further questions?
Mayor Sundberg?
Uh, Councilmember Sundberg?
Uh, just for some clarity, uh, what would happen going forward is a proclamation would be read before major events and are certain tribes mentioned or, or accurately named for certain parts of land? Or are we just naming a, a indigenous people as a whole or?
Yeah, I could answer that. We do specifically address four major ethnic groups and tribal groups that, um, existed in this area. But we also pay honor to forty-eight other groups that have, um, stewarded this land in the past as well. Uh, typically we see land acknowledgements done at the, at, at major events and at the beginning of council meetings to begin. But they are welcome at any point that we feel it's appropriate.
Mayor?
Uh, Mayor Protem.
Am I understanding that this is going to be read at every event that the city holds before an event? And, and, and then I just heard at every council meeting? I mean, why wouldn't we just do it one time?
Yeah, we, uh, so we typically see land acknowledgements read at major events, so council meetings they would be appropriate at, um, or large organizations that involve our community. The City of Denver does read theirs quite frequently and so do a number of the educational facilities throughout the Denver metro area. We can look to them for additional recommendations on when we see them read the most, just so that we are in line with practices that are done, um, in honor of our indigenous peoples.
Mayor?
Sorry, what was it?
Jurenski.
Mayor, uh, Councilmember Jurenski.
Uh, the only way that I will support this is if we also acknowledge that this is actually God's country. So if that's one of the forty-eight also in recognition, uh, here, that's the only way I'm going to, in any way, shape or form before this. And Sarah, I'd like to know how many, how many staff are in the Office of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion? How many?
Um, we currently have myself as the DEI officer, a DEI program or project coordinator, and we currently have a vacancy for a DEI manager position.
So four total positions in this office?
Three. I apologize.
Three, but, but we have a vacancy, so we're looking for a fourth person?
Uh, sorry, we have two currently staffed and one vacancy for a total of three positions.
Thank you. I am adamantly against this. And if we have an entire department working on things like this, like I said, unless we're going to acknowledge this is God's country, I can't even believe this is coming to city council tonight.
Further questions?
Mayor?
Mayor?
Councilmember Lawson?
Councilmember Lawson.
Um, Sarah, I just had a question. So I know this is in respect for indigenous people, but land has been conquered, uh, I mean, has been conquered from all racial groups. Um, and that's where I'm struggling with this. Um, it seems like this could be kind of divisive in a way because land has been conquered from all, a lot of different cultural and ethnic backgrounds. So I'm just trying to figure out why was this, a, and no disrespect, I understand, but why was this particular group chosen? And it's not just an overall, um, I guess, proclamation of how land has been conquered, um, in multiple ethnic groups?
Yeah, so land acknowledgements are actually centuries of years old. And so they've really come about in the past few years as formal adoptions by municipalities and organizations to honor traditions that have been passed through centuries. So it actually was not uncommon for many organizations, particularly of those indigenous individuals, to honor the, the stewards of the land that came before them. And so this is our way of simply, um, acknowledging that the land that we live and work on was originally stewarded by individuals centuries and centuries ago, and that we want to pay homage to that history as American history.
Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Jurenski.
Uh, centuries and centuries ago, that, that's God.
Further, further questions, discussion?
Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Coombs.
Just to clarify, there's a separation of church and state and peoples are separate from God. Um, so it would be inappropriate from a separation of church and state perspective to have an acknowledgement of God's land. We already in fact have a prayer at the beginning of our meetings as it is. So there is already a, I think, concern about separation of church and state in the way that we handle that. Adding in further acknowledgement in that regard is, yeah, wholly inappropriate. Um, and to berate and chastise our having a diversity equity, equity and exclusion office in the year twenty twenty-two is honestly shocking and disappointing.
Further discussion?
Mayor, what do you?
Councilmember Maria.
Yeah, I apologize. My computer's having, uh, video issues. Um, so I, I haven't gotten that resolved, so I'm, I'm off camera today. But no, I just, I think this is a fairly common tool that, um, you know, uh, different entities deploy, um, to show a sign of respect for our indigenous community, um, just having, uh, here in the state of Colorado. Um, you know, my, my alma mater, the University of Denver, um, being founded by somebody who participated in the San Creek massacre, right? Like we have a really long and complicated history with our indigenous communities in the state of Colorado as an example. And they, um, you know, a private university, um, at the forefront of kind of the educational space, um, have penned a report on kind of our complicated relationship with our indigenous community here in the state of Colorado, specifically the, the university's involvement. But I think it, it's an example of the kind of leadership and kind of academic, um, perspective on, on the matter. So I, I think it's a pretty common, commonly used tool. I don't really think it's that divisive. I think it's pretty straightforward in terms of honoring and acknowledging kind of the, the historical context, um, as it relates to our native community. I appreciated Councilmember Sundberg's comments about, you know, contextualizing that to specific tribes and, and not just, you know, indigenous people overall, we're trying to honor specific peoples, you know, trying to be more specific, um, to the indigenous community here that resides in Colorado. So I just wanted to say, I, I think it's pretty straightforward. I, I support it moving forward. Um, and thanks for letting me share my comments. Thanks.
City manager here, uh, Mr. Thomas?
Yes, Mayor?
strongly, did this, uh, go through your office?
Yes.
Do you think it's appropriate for you to put this forward as opposed to a member of council put this forward?
Well, actually, uh, Councilmember Maria was the sponsor. Somehow that didn't get put onto the, uh, agenda for tonight.
Further discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Gardner?
No, Medina.
Councilmember Medina?
Yes, sir. Uh, I can just tell you that it's, it's just like you said earlier, it's just respecting the past, right? We, we all come from different places. I participate in a global, a world, uh, meeting, you know, twice a month. And they acknowledge it from as far as Australia, England, Germany, very different places. And they do the same acknowledgement of their communities as well. So it's not specific to the United States. It's something that's going on worldwide. So just giving an FYI.
Uh, further questions, discussion?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Protem?
Um, is this?
Is this stolen in the in the language? I mean, I I just feel it's very divisive. I understand respecting. You know, our 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 path, but. I I can't support this.
Further discussion?
Mayor.
Uh, Councilor Ms. Ryan. Oh, Councilor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I just wanted to say I strongly support this moving forward. And I'm sorry that you might take offense with the word stolen, but that is what happened. I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong acknowledging the past, so. That's all I have to say.
Further discussion? I see none. Is there opposition? Mayor poses. Uh, Jurenski. Sorry.
Zivonic.
Gardner.
Sundberg.
Mayor, I approve this as well.
Uh, a majority of our resident opposition, uh, the postal will not be forward. Uh, item number three C, an intergovernmental agreement regarding major drainage way planning for Prairie Dog Draw. And its tributaries, uh, Sarah Young.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Sarah Young, Deputy Director of Aurora Water Planning and Engineering. This item is an IGA with Mile High Flood District for the Prairie Dog Draw Basin. It's a major drainage basin uh, plan. Uh, the the drainage area is just west of the Front Range Airport. The the point of it is to identify a flood plain in this area, stream corridors, and projects that would reduce flood risks. It's only uh, within the city of Aurora, so the. Entire costs would be split between Aurora and Mile High Flood District. We would each be contributing a hundred thousand dollars.
Uh, questions and staff? Seeing none, is there opposition to moving item number three C forward? Seeing no opposition, item number three C will move forward. Item number three D. Uh, intergovernmental agreement regarding major drainage way planning for West Tollgate Creek tributaries. Uh, Sarah Young again.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is an additional uh, major drainage way plan with Mile High Flood District. This one is for the tributaries or the streams that lead to the West Tollgate Creek. West Tollgate Creek winds from approximately E four seventy and Smoky Hill Road to just east of the Aurora Municipal Center. So it's all the tributary drainages, uh, and similarly, it is to identify flood risks, how we would have. Put projects in place to manage those flood risks. It winds um, actually in the county and in the city, and so because of that. The total project cost is two hundred thousand dollars. Mile High Flood District would contribute half of that. But the other half would be split between us and Southeast Metro Stormwater Authority. Um, our portion would be eighty thousand dollars.
Uh, questions and staff? Seeing none, um, is there any opposition to moving item number three D forward? Seeing none, item number three D will move forward. Item number three E. Stone Pia Springs Watershed Sediment Management Program, Alexandra Davis.
Yes, good evening, Alexandra Davis, Deputy Director for Water Resources, and I'll just say how delightful it is that it's raining. We love it when it rains. Item three E is an IGA with Denver Water concerning the watershed above Stranza Springs. So Stranza Springs is owned and operated by Denver, but Aurora owns seven hundred acre feet of storage space within the reservoir. And we take delivery, and and I think everyone here on council understands the importance of Stranza Springs. Reservoir, all of our Colorado, Arkansas and Upper South Platte Basin water comes through that reservoir. In the last twenty five years. You all have also experienced our increasingly catastrophic wildfires, and there have been two. Up above Stranza Springs as well as other fires in that area. But those, the Hayman and the Buffalo Creek fires were so hot that they sterilized the soil. And even today, decades later, the vegetation is returning slowly. So the impact of that is that rain events over these burn areas continue to bring sediment down the South Platte River and into Stranza Springs. And not only does this impair the capacity of this critical structure, but it also creates significant water quality issues. As you are well aware, both Denver and Aurora have been participating on watershed health projects throughout our watersheds. To help foster more resilient forests. This particular IGA will allow Aurora to work with Denver Water on the specific burn areas above Stranza Springs to mitigate these ongoing impacts. As well as to work to prevent more sediment from entering the reservoir itself. So the program will include designing, permitting, constructing a variety of projects such as sediment traps, check jams. Trail improvements um, to trap or prevent sediment. Denver has already identified over eighty one potential projects. And the total uh, expected cost of this project will be uh, two point five million dollars. Aurora's portion will be the prorated portion at fifteen point seventy three percent. And the total not to exceed amount for Aurora is three hundred and ninety three thousand dollars. Denver Water will invoice us quarterly on the actual expenses. The IGA will remain in force for five years, at which point it will be reevaluated. The request is that you move this on to council for final approval.
Questions? Well, I just have one question, Alexandra. You know, the um. You know, we get, we get an overgrowth of underbrush and. Uh, we get too many trees uh, crowded together, and we get a catastrophic fire. Uh, is there, is is part of this management plan is it to take care of that underbrush, uh, to some extent and to trim the trees?
It's a great question and important question. Uh, this particular agreement is looking at sediment and erosion control. The next agreement will go directly to what you're questioning, because. Those projects where we are reducing fuels in the forest, where we are thinning the forest because they are overgrown and unhealthy are. Incredibly important to prevent the catastrophic wildfires. So that's coming next.
Is there opposition to moving item number three E forward? Seeing none, item number three E will move forward. Item number three F. Uh, for the use and benefits of Colorado State Forest Service, uh, Alexandra.
Yes, this IGA is um, designed to address your question, Mayor. It is an IGA with the US Forest Service. As many are aware, the US Forest Service has a significant amount of land above all of our reservoirs. All of our reservoirs, diversion structures, conveyance structures, and again, you know, catastrophic wildfires continue to occur in Colorado. And set new records, not the kind of records that we want set. Our ecosystem is a fire-based ecosystem, and fires can be regenerative and and important to a healthy ecosystem. But that when the fire burns too hot and too large, the damage can be devastating and long lasting. So this IGA is to partner with the US Forest Service and the Colorado State Forest Service. To proactively improve the ecological functions and the resiliency of the fire of the forest. Through addressing those issues that you, Mayor, just brought up. So prescribed fire, fuels, reduction projects. Forest thinning projects, land rehabilitation projects. And uh. Erosion control and uh, bringing lands that have previously been affected back into some sort of ecological health. This agreement just sets the framework for that conversation. As the Forest Service, Colorado Forest Service, and Aurora identify specific projects. And the cost of those projects, there will be future agreements to fund those specific projects. So this is just to set the framework for that um, conversation and to enter into that partnership.
Uh, questions on item number three F?
Mayor.
Uh, Councilor Coles.
Thank you, Alex, for bringing this item forward. I was wondering if there's gonna be in those future partnerships. Work with the wildfire-ready water desk program that the state of Colorado is undertaking. Um, to address.
Yeah, absolutely. So right now, the one of the issues around watershed protection and. Um, particularly as it pertains to preventing and mitigating catastrophic wildfires, is there are a lot of groups. Each area um, will concern citizens and entities will come together and form a group and. And then what we've seen happen is that. The specific group like the South Platte Enhancement Board will focus on one area, and some people in that group will say, well, we want to focus over here. And they'll start another group. So there are a lot of local entities who are trying to accomplish this. Watershed health projects, and as the state and as the federal government have become more and more focused on this issue. Due to, you know, what's happened in California and Colorado and the entire West, uh, Portland, Oregon, over the last decade. I think we're seeing a. A uh, ability to sort of concentrate resources and work less in less of a patchwork fashion. So yes, that group will be very helpful. Uh, we will definitely be talking to them. We know the, my staff who works on these issues knows those people who are working on those issues, and so we will be in connection with them. Absolutely.
Further questions? Or comments? Alexandra, thank you so much. Oh, is. Thank you. Is in, is there any objection uh, to moving uh, item number three F forward? Seeing none, item number three F will move forward. Item number three G, update on the existing retail development policy guidelines?
Mayor.
Uh, Mayor Protem.
Uh, yes, um, so I brought this forward um, to Andrea Aminic in Development Services. Primarily because we have not updated our incentive program for retail um, for I think about ten years. And in speaking with some of the retailers and shopping centers, um, as well as the community wants, you know, better retail in our, in our city. There's kind of a gap uh, in terms of being able to attract the 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 high-quality tenants. And we have a vacant space that we would love to have fill. So this is just an update in the um, in the policy. And to be able to attract desirable uh, tenants and um, and the old one. Really focuses more on physical changes versus bringing in new tenants. So I'll turn it over to Andrea Aminic.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. I'm Andrea Aminic, the Manager of Development Services, and as the Mayor Protem indicated. This is an existing policy guideline um, that the Aurora City Council can. Considered and supported about ten years ago. These guidelines did not prohibit the kinds of incentives that the Mayor Protem indicated. They were a little more focused on physical changes, but as the market has changed and staff reviewed the guidelines. In light of our conversations that we were having with developers and brokers and owners. At ICSC and other types of meetings. We decided that um. The council member is correct, that we need to update these guidelines to make sure that we expand council's ability. To provide incentives for um, bringing new desirable tenants into um, vacant. Currently vacant spaces. The backup in uh, in your packet should show the changes to the policy. I would just briefly highlight. A couple of those changes uh, for you. That we are encouraging um, a focus and specifically stating that. Incentives can be used to re-tenant vacant space. As long as there are positive impacts on city revenues and generating new tax revenue for the city. The improved spaces, we can do both large and smaller spaces. Usually, uh, if a property owner has um, multiple buildings or a center, we want to deal with. For a larger incentive, we would want to deal with fifty percent of the existing space. But for a single building, as long as it's over uh, ten thousand square feet, that um, that would be within policy guidelines. And then the incentive could be up to thirty percent of the project costs, including things like concessions. That desirable tenants frequently uh, make requests for in choosing a location for their store. And then generally, the portion of new taxes available for the incentive would be capped at fifty percent. Of the sales taxes um, available, resi-reserving fifty percent of those new sales taxes. For the city, and that the length of any incentive would be the lesser of. Ten years or the life of the new tenant lease, whichever is less. Okay, so um, if there are um, any questions, I'm available, but that's it.
Questions, Mr.?
Mayor, I just have a question for Andrea. Andrea, so just, um, I'm fine with this. I just had a question. So with the, with the cap. And the fifty percent is, are the, would a tenant be bound by a lease agreement? Like, I know it says here incentive at lesser of ten years. Is it just, will they be bound by a lease? So if they take, if we give an incentive, they go into the space, we do things, improvements or whatever it may be. Are they bound by a lease, or is the lease kind of a a fluid lease?
So um, most tenants, most tenants will sign a lease to get into a space. And what we're trying to do is so, say we find a desirable tenant and they go into one vacant space. In, you know, in a large building. So we would be looking at the change that it makes. That new tenant could possibly generate additional sales taxes in its surrounding leases. So we're looking at fifty percent of the new taxes in that whole building. You know, all the spaces, and it's tied to the lease. So if the lease is only fi, if the landlord only gives the tenant. Five-year lease, then. The the landlord has that five-year period to get the additional revenue to contribute to the concessions they made. So we're participating in things like concessions. It could be tenant improvements or things like that. That make the tenant want to come into the space. Did that answer your question, council member?
Yes, it did. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Further questions? Uh, seeing uh, or no further questions, is there any, is there any opposition to moving item number three G forward? Seeing none, item number three G will move forward. Item number three H, keeping their domesticated ducks in residential area. Augusta Allen.
Hello, good evening. Oh, it was brought to animal services' attention that there were certain citizens and. Help the members that would like to see ducks become. Um, allowed in the city limits along with chickens. So that is um, what this is about. Did my screen come up?
It's up.
Other point, okay. So with the help of Angela um, in the city attorney's office, we amended the city code. Um, relating to the keeping of chickens to allow for domesticated ducks as well. Um, ducks are very social animals, so um, it would be only in pairs that they would be allowed. And it would still limit the number of birds allowed per uh, permit to the current maximum. Since the city of Aurora um, already allows chickens, it makes it simple to bring them in. It would be on lots, twenty thousand square feet or less, um, would still only be allowed. A total of six birds and twenty thousand or more would allow for the eight still. Just with pairs of ducks along with the chickens. And that is. The extent of it, unless you want me to go through the ordinance changes other than the the square footage and numbers.
Are there any questions? Oh, number three H, is there any opposition to moving three H forward?
Uh, Mayor.
Um, Councilor Medina.
Oh, it's Sundberg.
Uh, Councilor Sundberg.
I just wanted to say whether this moves forward or not, it's it's water off my back, but I'd like to see.
I was waiting for that one. I was waiting for somebody to do someone. Uh, any other questions or comments?
Mayor.
Uh, Mayor Protem.
I mean, I like ducks, they're cute. I I'm trying to read in the backup, um, you know, how the. I, I'm trying to read in the backup, um, you know, how the, I guess they have to be kept in their yard, X feet away from the neighbor's yard and all these different requirements for code. No one's afraid the ducks are going to fly away or does that mean that the ducks' wings are clipped?
Domesticated ducks typically will stay where they are. They won't typically fly away unless there's not food or water, but you can clip their flight um feathers if necessary.
That, and that sounds inhumane to me. So, but you can't guarantee they won't fly into the neighbor's yard, right? Like if the neighbor has a pond and the duck is like, I have no pond, but I would like to go to the pond across the way. They might do that.
Part of the requirement is that they maintain enough water for the ducks um on their property. And the way that um the chicken coops are currently set up, they are to be predator-proof, which also means that they have to have a top. So they have to be covered, uh, you know, over the top so they wouldn't be able to just fly really out unless they were not in compliance with their permit.
But in the summertime, I think I read, right, there was like for certain part of the year where it's nice weather. Are they supposed to be outside or are they cooped up in that cage?
So it's like an outdoor enclosure, if you will.
Oh, it's an outdoor.
Coop that's inside to, to nest in and they can come outside into the enclosure.
But I thought it said they needed water in the, in the.
In the enclosure, mhm.
Water to swim in or water to drink?
Both.
Both? Okay, well, we just passed a turf water ordinance where we can't even have water features. So where, does that mean nobody can have a water feature for the duck? Is they're banned?
I don't have an answer to that.
Okay, and then my other question is on just, and I know we allow the chickens, but um do they, do they potentially bring disease? It says that you should not have your domestic duck um engage with a regular duck.
A wild duck.
Oh, wow.
They should, yes, they should not uh co-mingle.
Okay. How is code enforcement going to keep track of people cleaning their cages, making sure there's water? Separating ducks from the wild ducks? That it looks like a lot of work.
It is a lot of work and it would come to Animal Services to do those welfare checks if somebody complained. Um, if we did not have a complaint, we would have no cause to check that.
Okay, and then how many ducks are allowed in a house, in a one, a single family?
Two on a small lot and four on a larger lot.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Uh, seeing none, is there, is there any opposition to moving item number three H forward? Seeing no opposition, item number three H will move forward. Item number three I, a resolution in support of enhanced design guidelines for chase drains. Uh, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, and this is um, in, in word six, there were a lot of concerns about drainage um over the last three years. And so we've had um public meetings with Public Works and water staff um with the public and, and help, trying to help resolve issues with our residents. Um, one of the ideas that came forth was um putting in chase drains, but it, it's expensive to put in the chase drains. And then I think residents felt that, you know, that that should have been something that the builder did or that the city did. And so anyway, we've come up with um a number of different solutions to try to mitigate that. But um I wanted to um put forth some changes in our, um, in our policies for, or our roadway manual, I should say. Um, to make changes to the, the chase drain requirements because they're pretty complicated, which adds cost to them. So uh Victor will speak to this, but to add some flexibility to lower the cost. But then the other component is to um have the builders provide a one-year warranty so that homeowners um would have that timeframe to see the weather pattern over the year. Um, and then uh, and then if there was a drainage issue and it was inspected by the city and deemed to be um that a chase drain would be the solution, then the builder would have to um put in the chase drain for, for the uh resident. So I will, um, Victor, I think is presenting.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, Victor Rochelle here, Deputy Director of Public Works over Engineering. Um, so I'll hit the highlights on the resolution. Um, as the Mayor Protem mentioned, we are currently going through a roadway manual update process. As part of that process, we are making some modifications particularly around the chase drains. Um, those include re- reducing the number of homes that are contributing drainage uh to the roadway to trigger a chase drain as well as um adding a provision if we have more than one sump pump draining to a side swale, draining towards the road, which is a, a condition we've seen a lot. Uh, that would also require a chase drain. Uh, we've also acknowledged Aurora Waters' Xerik landscaping, curbside landscaping uh initiatives to do water uh conserv- conservative grasses, xeriscap rock design in that area, which also helps drainage and reduces uh ice buildup in that area that we have seen. And as uh the Mayor Protem mentioned, we're also looking at a 12-month look back. So from the closing date uh on the home, the homeowner can um identify a potential drainage concern, reach out to the city. Staff will investigate and confirm uh the, the issue at hand and if a chase drain is a reasonable resolution. And then work with the homeowner or the home builder to install a trace cha- chase drain to resolve that issue. Um, last thing I will mention, uh, sorry, uh, Mayor Protem uh mentioned also, we are looking at adding some flexibility to our trace chase drain detail uh to make it more affordable for homeowners. Uh, they're running anywhere at the moment from $5,000 to $8,000 per install. And if we build in some flexibility, depending on the amount of flows, uh, that should have a positive impact on budget for residents.
Uh, questions, the staff? Uh, seeing none, is there any opposition to moving uh item number three I forward? Seeing none, item number three I will move forward. Item number four A, uh IGAs to coordinate with Rappel County for November 2022 special municipal election, Katie Rodriguez.
Yes, this is Katie Rodriguez, city clerk. Um, items four A through four C, I'm going to uh present together. Council recently adopted ordinance 2022 33 approving a ballot question asking the city's registered electors if they would like to amend the city charter to replace qualifications for elective office. Um, it would remove felony and replace it with embezzlement of public money, bribery, perjury, solicitation of bribery or subordination of perjury. So items four A through four C are the IGAs with each county. They authorize the city of Aurora to coordinate with each county to conduct the special municipal election conjunction with the November 2022 general election. And these IGAs are required by state law. Uh, and I'm available for any questions.
Questions, the staff? Um, I've seen none, uh, then is there any opposition for to moving item four A, four B and four C forward? I've seen none, item number four A, four B and four C will move forward. Item number four D, Colfax Bus Rapid Transit, BRT, small uh starts, uh small starts rating application support letter. Uh, DCM Perry.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Laura Perry, Deputy City Manager. The city and county of Denver has requested a letter of support from the city of Aurora for the Colfax Bus Rapid Transit Project. The letter requested will support the Federal Transit Administration ratings application, which is one step of several required for transit agencies seeking capital investment grant funding. As a reminder, the Colfax Bus Rapid Transit Project will consist of three distinct segments. A dissegment downtown, which will run between Union Station and Civic Center. A Denver segment between Civic Center and Colfax and Yosemite. And the Aurora segment, which will run from Colfax and Yosemite to the Colfax and R Line Light Rail Station. The city of Aurora will be constructing 12 enhanced bus rapid transit stations, which will include branding elements, trap uh ticket vending machines, variable message signs and real-time schedule information and emergency telephones, among other amenities. Upon implementation, the project will reduce transit travel time by up to 15 minutes, increase transit ridership and provide more affordable and reliable access to jobs along the Colfax corridor. In November of 2021, the Colfax BRT project was approved by the FTA for project development and is formally in the FTA pipeline of capital investment grant projects. As the designated recipient of funds, the Regional Transportation District, RTD, is the project sponsor. And with the cooperation of Denver, Aurora and CDOT, RTD will pursue small starts funding under the FTA for the project. The next step in the process is the submission of a small start grant rating application to the FTA this month. The project will be rated based on its justification and local financial commitment. Following the project rating, RTD intends to submit a construction grant application in August of 2023. The requested letter of support will strengthen the regional project rating application and was an expedited request from Denver. As such, the letter of support was not presented at the last Pfizer Policy Committee due to the expedited timing requested by Denver.
Thank you. Uh, questions, the staff? Uh, seeing none, is there uh opposition to moving item number four D forward? Supporting item number four D. Uh, seeing none, item number four D will move forward, thank you. Uh, item number four E, update on Colorado Public Utilities Commission rulemaking, residential natural gas distribution. Uh, oh, it's distribution twice. Uh, Victor Rochelle, Rochelle.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening again. Victor Rochelle, Deputy Director of Public Works, Engineering. Um, I brought this item forward back in January of this year uh to council for some direction. Um, since that time, uh, the PUC has um extended and is asking for additional input. Uh, as a summary, uh, the rule at hand and the area of concern is that the proposed rule eliminates a 28% natural gas credit to developers when they install natural gas infrastructure in new development. Um, based on calculations, that comes out to somewhere around $1,200 per home. Um, if the rule is eliminated, that we could see an increase. Obviously, there's a, a big concern around home affordability with this rule as it stands. Per direction from city council study session in January, uh, we worked with our outside legal counsel and filed a motion with the PUC um stating that we did not, as a city, support the proposed rule. Uh, since then, the PUC has come back and asked for additional comments. At this time, staff proposed to file comments again with our outside legal counsel on August 24th, consistent with our previous direction that we oppose the rule. And in addition, the PUC has asked for feedback on a phased-in approach and what the city might support. Um, if they were to look at a phased-in approach for this rule. Based on internal discussions with multiple departments, staff would propose that phased-in approach that includes all forms of development, residential, uh, income restricted, retail, that any site that has submitted a complete site plan on or before June 1st, 2023 would be exempt from this proposed rule. And we would work with our outside legal counsel to get that submitted to the PUC by August 24th. I'm available for any questions.
Uh, questions, the staff? Uh, seeing none, is there any objection to moving item number four E forward?
Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Zavonic.
Yeah, Zavonic. I, um, I would, I wouldn't support moving it forward in any form. I'd like the city to continue to oppose um this role generally. I still am worried about the cost. I'm also worried about the fact that we're talking about greenhouse emissions and getting rid of natural gas and moving it to electricity, um, which is generated more by coal than anything else. And especially if you phase natural gas out. So I, I, I don't think that this does, I think it's a necessary cost to homeowners. Um, and I don't know that it does anything to actually address greenhouse gas.
Um, further discussion, item number four E.
Oh, Mayor.
Uh, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I just uh wanted to say I agree with Councilmember Zavonic. Um, I, I don't think it's really prudent for us to make these restrictions. And um, so I, I would be in opposition.
Further discussion? Uh, seeing none, is there objection to moving item number four E forward?
Zavonic.
Zavonic.
Sundberg.
Durin, speak.
Bergen.
Uh, Mayor, poses any other opposition? I have um, uh, Councilmember Zavonic, uh Bergen, Sundberg, Durinsky and the Mayor Protem. I mean, and, and the mayor. Uh, is there anybody else in opposition?
Mayor Cindy Collett, Deputy Dir- or Director of Public Works, could I add a little clarification on here? Thank you. Um, under this uh proposal, we are asking for support of council to support the proposed plan for comments to the PUC. That does include continuing to reiterate our opposition to the proposed rule change making around the um gas infrastructure. And then in addition, the second question is, is the phase-in date that we proposed um acceptable? So there's two parts there. I just wanted to clarify in case that brings up any other questions. Thank you.
Mayor.
Uh, questions, Cindy Collett. Uh, Mayor Protem.
Okay, so, so it does support our opposition?
That's correct, Mayor Protem.
Okay, well, then I guess I need to avoid my.
Uh, let me ask a question again after the clarification. Is there opposition to moving item number four E forward? I've seen none, then item number four E will move forward. Item number four F, uh Colorado Public Utilities Commission proposed amendments to the rules regulating rail. Uh, Victor Rochelle again.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Victor Rochelle, Deputy Director of Public Works. Uh, this item, unlike the uh previous item for the PUC, is actually more in favor uh for the city. Uh, this proposed rulemaking uh by the PUC um is with the rails, uh heavy rail in particular uh inside the, the metro area and putting rules in place uh to support local governments um with, working with the rails. Um, staff originally provided comments on this proposed rulemaking again in January 2022 this year uh regarding the rules in support uh of them and providing factual evidence of unfair practices employed by the railroads. Um, the comments that were provided by staff were consistent with the Colorado Communications and Utility Alliance, of which Aurora is a member. Um, based on those comments, the PUC uh issued an interim decis- decision agreeing that the proposed rules were necessary. Uh, they have extended the comment period uh based on those issues and are seeking additional details and input from local jurisdictions. Um, so with that, staff uh in coordination with our outside legal counsel, Kessinger and Feldman, uh plan to file comments in response to the commission's request and supporting um the CCUA uh regarding legal issues raised by the railroads and other miscellaneous issues. Uh, this time, we're seeking uh council support to continue that coordination and comment uh with the PUC regarding this matter with the railroads.
Questions, the staff? Uh, seeing none, is there any opposition to moving item four up forward? Seeing none, item four F will move forward. Item number five A, resolution to initiate a public education campaign regarding panhandling. Uh, Councilmembers Sundberg, Owen Lawson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Now, let me just state that there's a one-word change here in the resolution from a public education campaign to stop panhandling to a public education campaign to reduce panhandling. So it's pretty straightforward. We want to initiate a campaign to help educate the public that out of the kindness and generosity of their heart, it's better not to give directly to panhandlers but to those organizations that are working hard to support them and provide for their needs. So I believe that, as other cities have done, to encourage something like this, it lessens a cycle of dependency that some people might have. For example, I work near a, a major intersection where I have seen and gotten to know a number of panhandlers and homeless folks. And I have seen the same three, four, five panhandlers out there for approximately four or five years. Uh, one has been lost to an overdose on heroin. Another young lady uh overdosed nearly on heroin. So, pretty straightforward. We want to channel the giving through an established financial vehicle in the city already, which is called the Spirit of Aurora. Uh, Kim, Head of Communications, will describe some of. Uh, Kim, Head of Communications, will describe some of the communication efforts there and the artwork. So, we just hope that in the long term, this will lead to, um, just a better care and, uh, well-being for folks around town. And I'd like to turn it over to Angela, who would discuss another component of it, and then go to, uh, Kim and George.
Yes, thank you, um, Councilmember Sundberg. So how Councilmember Sundberg and I came, came together on this, um, we, for me, um, basically looking at the public safety issue of this, um, I can give a couple intersections. I live in Ward Five, but in Ward Four, Peoria and Parker Road, the median is so narrow. I have seen people sit down, I have seen people, you know, out on the curb when cars are coming and they're turning left on Parker Road. This is just one example. I've seen where animals have been in the midst of traffic. I've seen where some of the people who are panhandling or have almost got hit. And there's also little altercations between drivers, because when that light goes green, then people are ready to go. I think that for me, it's really a pub, a safety issue for not only the person who is on these narrow, very narrow, in most cases, and that's just one over on Chambers and Parker Road. I've seen, that's a narrow, um, median as well, where individuals are standing or sitting and you have cars coming close to them. It's a, it, to me, it's a, a public safety issue for the people who are doing the panhandling and also for individuals who, the drivers, um, in many, many cases. So I know that, um, before me and Councilmember Sundberg brought, came together, I had talked to APD and also to our city attorney's office, and I know that, you know, this is not a mandate to stop up, uh, you know, han- a panhandling. It's basically giving people the thought that when, especially drivers, that you know what, instead of me trying to give in this way where I can maybe cause some issues with the people who are panhandling on these particular areas, and they're all over the city, I just frequent these areas a lot. But, maybe I can give in a different way. And it's still people's choice to decide what they want to do, in terms of if they want to give someone something, they can. But I think for me, the process and why I'm supportive of this is that it gives people an opportunity who are actually wanting to give, especially in these areas where it is a dangerous cycle, that they can say, you know what, instead of me doing it right here, I'm going to actually give in a different way and give through Spirit of Aurora and, and through organizations that actually help these individuals. The second reason as well, working and actually getting confirmation from Jessica Prosser, you know, there are some issues with human trafficking going on in these particular areas, um, and around the city. And anybody knows that because of my illicit massage parlor ordinance, any kind of human trafficking that we can curtail in the city of Aurora, I'm going to try to be supportive of that as well. So I think, you know, the common goal is to really reduce panhandling, to really get people focused on, maybe there's another way that I can give to help individuals. And so, um, I hope through, um, council, you will be supportive of this and actually look at some of the signage that has been developed by our creative team, our communications team, to actually see that this could be an effective way to actually reduce the panhandling in a ways to create a public safety, um, to protect people in general, drivers and the people who are actually doing the panhandling and the animals and the people that sometimes they have children. All of those factors are, um, I think important in this, um, in this conversation. So I will turn it over to Kim.
Thank you. Adrian, would you please share? Thank you. So, um, good evening, Mayor and City Council members and sponsors Lawson and Councilmember Sundberg. Thank you very much for allowing me an opportunity to speak with you about what a communications plan would include. And so I'm going to walk through that here quickly. Next slide, please. So, wanted to spell out, it's been very well spoken tonight, but the effort would be to give real change. So it's really, um, an effort to help reduce panhandling and solicitation on the street, to educate our residents about a better way to give real change, to share information about donating to Spirit of Aurora, which was actually established decades ago by Aurora citizens, um, in an effort to support local nonprofits. We'd like to share information, um, and raise community awareness about the issues related to solicitations on the street. Uh, I think Councilmember Lawson spoke to the pedestrian safety, those people who are asking for a hand. Um, and certainly it creates a risk of motor vehicle accidents, among other issues that can be related. Next slide, please. Thank you. Um, so this is some of the, uh, concept we came up with about trying to get people to recognize they can give real change, um, and really focus on the positive and people's generosity. And so on the left side of the screen are just the ways we would, um, show that logo or identity for the campaign. On the right-hand side is a draft of a street sign, or it would have more information if it was a poster or other collateral, collateral material. So to give you an idea of how we want to present this, um, and the spirit that is behind it. Next slide, please. Um, elements of key messaging is important. As we've already spoken about, we live in a community that is extremely generous. And people who are stopping to, to, to give money to someone, um, are wanting to do that and to help in a meaningful and compassionate way. And so we want the campaign to focus on those aspects. Uh, we certainly want to, um, find a way for people to seek out services that could actually help them, again, to reduce that activity and to give real change to those in need. So Spirit of Aurora also already houses a number of programs that support homelessness, uh, efforts and services. So Spirit of Aurora funds local agencies. Jessica can speak to, um, it being part of our funding process, the NOFOR process. And so council would see that, staff would review those, um, dollars, donated dollars and determine where they go. Uh, would support, uh, people experiencing homelessness and really the goal to foster long-term change towards self-sufficiency. Again, helping to solve, uh, the motivations and the reasons, uh, people are finding themselves in a position of asking for a hand. Um, also to help, uh, make sure people understand that stepping into the street or standing on those mediums or curbs are extremely risky. It's very unsafe. Uh, we've had incidents. I don't have data on that precisely. But we want to make sure that we educate about it. It puts people in a, in a, a bad spot, um, and a risky spot. And then also, it does also impact our, our, um, residents who are in vehicles, uh, can cre- increase traffic accidents and the like. So those are the key elements of the messaging. Next slide, we'll talk about the tactics. So we see creating a landing page where people can get this information on auroragov slash real, give real change. We would have strategically placed signage in areas where soliciting takes place. Uh, that's a decision yet to be made, is how, how those get placed, how many get placed. Um, and, and we probably need to look at some data to make those recommendations. Certainly a social media campaign to help educate folks and, again, direct their generosity to these local nonprofits. And then, of course, our materials would be done in the top five languages spoken in Aurora. Uh, we would create posters, businesses would be welcome to have those, um, and individuals, if need. We will include newsletter articles that will talk in general about how to give and how to make change, as well as, um, a deeper dive on some of the issues related to it. Uh, and then our HOA, um, in, in Aurora are very active and often produce their own newsletters, and we find that to be a very effective way to put the word out as well. And news releases for media, so they understand what the campaign and the education is all about. And we certainly can produce public service announcements or short videos that we can ru- run on Aurora TV between programming in advance of council, et cetera, and on our social media accounts. All of these materials, of course, would be available for council to use with your constituents as well. Last slide, I speak a little bit about the signage cost, uh, talking with traffic. Street signs, it's the pole and the sign to get them produced and installed is about four hundred dollars a sign. Timing is between two, excuse me, four and eight weeks. It can be a little bit sooner, but, um, sometimes we were, uh, they're, uh, experiencing supply issues. And of course, sometimes we have to get clearance if it's a CDOT right-of-way. For instance, there's added approvals that would need to take place to place in their right-of-way. Uh, possible sign locations, of course, city streets where we see a concentration of solicitation activity, or if we're seeing experiences with pedestrians and vehicular safety concerns. Um, if indeed, and I've checked around with parks and others, there were to be a problem with solicitation at a city facility, again, the goal is to get people to help donate so their dollars can really make a difference. And then lastly, CDOT property, we, we have discussed, um, two twenty-five and some of the off-rants, on-rants, and that would require a special approval process. Signage would be phased according to the location priorities and available budget. And the city does own two variable message boards in, uh, Public Works. They are used for, uh, projects, active construction, or emergency repairs. But when they're not on scene for those purposes, they could certainly be used to help amplify the education. And with that, the question for council tonight is if you would like to move this item forward to, resolution forward to a council meeting.
Questions to staff? Questions to staff?
Mayor.
Mayor.
Councilor goes. Councilor goes.
Um, yeah, so I, yeah, so I would agree, and why didn't go to any of the policy committees to deal with either homelessness or communications, where we could ask some of the basic questions, um, that I would want to ask, and there's really not much in the backup either. Um, it's just the resolutions. Um, so, I guess my question is, what's the data on the safety issues, like the, I'm, I believe you, I'm not doubting that people step into traffic and that that is unsafe, one hundred percent. But I guess my question is, what are the amount of citations that are currently issued for that behavior already? Um, what are the number of accidents? Like, where's the data around those issues? As well as data around the human trafficking, and that's an extremely serious problem. And so that's just all information that I think it would be really beneficial for it to have, and that we probably would have been able to have if this had gone to any policy committees at all, and not been just a late putback.
Uh, Councilmember Coombs, uh, Mayor?
Please, Mr.
Yeah, we probably could put this through a, a policy committee, but we honestly sort of fast-tracked it. It's my first thing moving forward and apologize if that wasn't done, but I think through discussion, through, through study session, we can hammer out some of those things, and we're following the lead of some other cities. For example, Houston, uh, Mayor Sylvester Turner has done a few things in, in that regard. There's a, in their multi-point approach, there is a, a panhandling education campaign as well as a camping ban. And, um, you know, he, he simply has been quoted as not wanting to enable people. And I know that, you know, just getting back to what this is causing people to do for the long term, at that intersection I mentioned earlier, people are making forty-five dollars an hour minimum, standing on that corner, according to the police. And it's just a hard cycle to break out of that just exacerbates the dependency. So I think there's a, just a real safety issue with it, and, and, and with mental health and dependency, et cetera.
Mayor.
Uh, Councilor goes.
Um, so right now, just with the no policy committee, no data, I'm not going to support this. But if we can get before the council meeting the data on traffic accidents, traffic citations, trafficking, as well as wherever the data comes from, in terms of the amount of money people are making panhandling, that also, I'm not sure where those numbers come from. I think if we can get actual numbers behind that, you know, that would help to kind of clarify. But right now, just with no backup, I can't support something that has no backup, that's what I feel would be good, as well as the information about Houston and whether or how that affected their panhandling, like, did having something in place make an impact? Kind of a before-after discussion, that's all that I'll be personally.
And Councilmember Coombs, I think for me, um, I know, I don't know how far back of data you want, but I hope that you'll be reasonable on the data that you want to look at, because if you're looking at going as far back as whatever, I think that that's kind of, you know, I mean, you have the right to request that, but I hope it's a reasonable, um, to look at certain data within a certain timeframe that's reasonable, that can be pulled within two weeks.
Mayor.
Uh, Mayor, sorry if I can respond to that.
Councilor goes.
Um, so yeah, I'm not saying we have to have all the data of forever, but I think something like comparison of Houston for and after their program would be helpful. Um, whatever data in the last, you know, I don't know, whatever you determine is a reasonable timeframe, um, I'm not going to give you parameters, whatever you consider reasonable around traffic infractions, traffic accidents, citations, um, and human trafficking. And then also the, where is the information coming from, or is it just anecdotal about how much money people are making?
Mayor.
Mayor Protem.
Uh, yeah, I'm in full support of this. I think it's a great campaign. Um, you know, too often, uh, we see people, a- as Councilmember Lawson mentioned, with children, you know, or animals in, in the middle of the street in medians, um, creating a really safe, uh, public safety issue. And, um, you know, cars are, you know, almost hitting people. And it, and I think it's really a very compassionate and effective way to try to, if we seriously want to help those that are panhandling, I think this is much more compassionate, that we are trying to get them to resources. I don't understand the opposition of needing all this data. I mean, it is clear day that it is dangerous. If you've ever seen it, if you've had people come up to your, to your car, um, sometimes, um, aggressive. And, and so to me, it's, you know, again, as both Council, uh, members Sundberg and Lawson stated, it, you, you can still give if you feel so inclined, but it's not really the best way to help an individual. It, I think people have good hearts and they want to help. And, um, but it, it's, it truly is not going to give them the resources that they need. And we talk about our homeless so often and making sure that we're not just giving them food, but that we're giving them resources. And I think this is really a great way to do it, so I'm in full support.
Mayor Zivonic.
Uh, Councilmember Zivonic.
Yeah, just question, I, um, is there anybody from city staff who might have some of the data that Councilmember Coombs is looking for, um, available now?
Uh, Mayor Pete Schulte with the City Attorney's Office, um, Public Safety Client Manager. Uh, Councilmember Coombs, we did do a little bit when, uh, Councilmember Lawson and Councilmember Sundberg came to us and asked questions about this. We did look back at, uh, our statutes. We'd had also several council members ask about panhandling statutes, and we did give, we do have a panhandling ordinance that makes it a municipal violation, um, but the only part of it that's actually enforceable now, after some, uh, Tenth Circuit cases based on the First Amendment, are the ones that do actively go into the traffic and create a safety issue. So police are aware that we have done a education campaign, uh, with the Police Department to let them know. And I know in the last two weeks, I think we've written, I think, three citations. We had one par officer, uh, and power to him. He, uh, he got irritated one day, decided to go out and write some citations, uh, for doing it. But, uh, what we've all talked about is, is a way, uh, to end the supply of money, uh, right? I mean, these individuals that are panhandling, we find in the courts, a lot of them, as, as, uh, Mayor Protem stated, have mental issues, um, that they're not getting the help that they need from the municipal court. So the, the idea was, and I remember talking, uh, specifically with Mayor Protem, uh, uh, Councilmember Lawson and Councilmember Sundberg at the CML Conference, is what were the ideas to try to stop the supply of money? And one of the ways that has worked, and I know that they mentioned in Houston and other cities, was to let people know it's okay to say no. I mean, even if they're, they're giving you the, uh, the eyes that, hey, um, I need the money, uh, give a, give a reason to, to, to say no. So that's kind of how, uh, some of the information started to come forward. We don't, I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any appetite for council to make it a crime for, for our citizens to give money to panhandlers, so they're trying to do something else, uh, to, to let them know that you don't have to do it.
Further, uh, questions to staff, discussion?
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you, sir. Um, so I guess my first question is, why is this council getting into the habit of bringing things forward without knowing what the fiscal note's going to be? Um, I understand we're going to need to get signs. Uh, my number one concern with the signs is, you know, folks can read, and if you have signs that are out there saying, don't give folks money, and that's what they're depending on to survive, I don't expect those signs to last particularly long. So can we address both the cost and the durability of those signs?
Uh, Kim, assessment?
Uh, ye- yes, Carly is also on the line from Traffic, um, who, who did the cost estimating on the signage. The number of signs we'll need, the four hundred per sign, will depend on where we want to place them throughout the city. So we certainly need to look at data to make a recommendation on that, uh, but it's four hundred dollars a sign. And Carly, if you'd like to add more about, I think there's usually about a ten percent replacement cost estimate each year.
Yes, uh, good evening, councilmembers. My name is Carly Campazano. I'm the Traffic Manager in the Public Works Department. Uh, we did look at the costs of just installing a ground sign, which is the cost that Kim provided. Uh, the- Uh, the, the maintenance will really depend on where they're placed. Uh, for example, signs in medians, like our standard keep-right signs, are hit by cars way more frequently than other signs that are further off the road. Um, I do agree with you that these signs are probably going to be likely to be vandalized more often than other signs, so I really don't have a good idea of what that will look like. It'll probably be a more fre- frequent replacement of probably just the panel, or maybe a cleaning of the sign. Um, so we'd probably want to bump up our replacement costs and our maintenance number. Um, but we really wanted to first see kind of what council thought and what the general budget for this would be, and then we can sharpen the pencils on the numbers. But I do agree with you, there will be maintenance and ongoing costs as well if these were to be installed, if that helps.
Uh, let me, um,
You, Carly?
A message to the city manager in that, uh, Councilmember McConnell's right, there should be a fiscal note, uh, with a proposal that is, wa- wa- to my view, with all proposals that come, uh, before study session, uh, in order to make a, um, a fair decision on the, on each proposal, it should have a cost estimate to it, I realize it's an estimate. But I definitely, uh, so there's not one here, but definitely expect a full fiscal note to, to come with, um, uh, this proposal when it gets first read and should go forward.
And Mayor Kaufman, I just want to make a comment. I know that when we had discussions, I had asked, and I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, but this is the question that I asked. I've asked about the fiscal note, because there's gonna be defacing of the signs, there's gonna be, you know, removal of the signs, and, you know, that's what I thought was gonna happen. And I'm not, and I, I brought this up, up amongst other questions about having some type of note. I know we have something here, but, you know, I did ask, I did bring that up when we were having that discussion, so I, I don't know why it was not in here, because I knew that this question was gonna come up.
Very well, um, uh, further, uh, questions of, or discussion?
Mayor?
Um, Councilmember Medea?
Nope, McConnell.
I'm glad, the pictures aren't showing it.
Oh, okay, sorry. Um, yeah, so my, uh, third question, I guess, on this is gonna be, um, kind of in line with what Councilmember Coombs requested. I would like to see some data on the efficacy of this kind of public, you know, outreach campaign, um, since there is gonna be some material cost, I want to make sure we're not just spending money out there, uh, to say we did something. Um, obviously, I, I agree with the traffic safety concerns and whatnot, but I want to remind you all that the issue here is that we have folks who don't have homes, and we have many other opportunities, uh, to provide homes for folks, uh, to get this problem, uh, under control. And that's what we're gonna go learn about here in a few weeks in Houston. I'm very excited that several of you have actually, uh, signed on to that. But, um, from my perspective, uh, if we don't know that this is actually gonna have, uh, a, a positive impact, uh, on, you know, for the, both the folks who are experiencing homelessness and for our residents, I don't see the point on moving something like this forward. And I would recommend instead that we put any potential costs that this, uh, program might incur into actually land banking, which is part of our housing strategy, uh, so that we can provide, um, housing, not just for the unhoused, but for our working-class families as well, um, or, uh, sock that money into a piggy bank, uh, for permanent supportive housing, as I'm hoping that we'll all see that that's actually effective and what we need to be doing after we return from our trip to Houston.
Mayor? Can I say, Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Lawson?
So, Councilmember McConnell, you make some very good points, but in your ward alone, I, I travel that quite frequently. I have seen issues with people that you're talking about, that you want to help, almost get hit. Mm-hmm. So, are you fine with that, people sitting there? I mean, this really is, it's a, it's an issue with the people that are panhandling, but also, there's issues with drivers getting into it. I mean, I understand what you're saying, and you might not think this is effective, but given an opportunity, it may just change some people to say, you know what, for, for the driver perspective, hey, you know what? Maybe I won't kind of give some money out here, maybe this is what I want to do in this way, 'cause this is gonna help these individuals. So all the points you made are right, but there is a safety issue that's going on that people are practicing, I've actually seen it almost happen. So I'm not even talking about the aggressive panhandling or anything like that. What I'm talking about is people sitting on the curb, people have their animals, people have children, because, and I know they're trying to make ends meet, or do whatever they're trying to do, but it's still an issue that could actually, you know, if I hit some, one of these individuals, it's my fault. And I, you know, I'm gonna feel terrible about that. These individuals are in a bad situation on some of these medians. So, I understand what you're saying, but to me, I'm looking at it from that perspective as well, to save the life of the person who's panhandling, and also the drivers who are, who are doing this. Who, you know, so I, I, I'm just not understanding why you don't understand that, that part of the issue, maybe.
Uh, Captain Mayor, can I respond to that?
The Councilor, of course.
Thank you, um, I fully understand that, and I acknowledge that actually in my comments. Um, I, I know the exact spot that you're talking about, um, those folks also do a similar thing on the off-ramp of 225 onto I-Liff, uh, right by where I live. Um, these kind, this kind of policy that you're proposing doesn't necessarily change that behavior. Um, in fact, I would argue it probably doesn't at all, but that's why I asked for some of the data, to see if this is actually a wise expenditure of city resources, when we do have other, uh, methods that we can implement that we know will work, if we actually can get the consensus or the political will, uh, or both, to make that happen on our council. So I'm not disagreeing with any of the points you brought up, uh, I'm just trying to make sure that what we're doing is actually effective, that's all.
Mayor, can I make a comment? It's, it may not change the behavior of the individuals who are panhandling, Councilmember Guard, I mean, Councilmember McConnell, but for the people who are actually giving, it may be a thought for them to say, you know what? Because I'm in, looking at this, maybe, looking at this sign, you know, this is not, this is a campaign, so this is not a bill, this is a campaign, that you know what, maybe I can give and help people in this way. So it, it may not, it may not change the mindset of what you're, you're looking to me more at the people who are panhandling, but may, it may change the behavior of people to think a little bit before, when they get up to these individuals, before they reach out to the, the person, look at the sign and say, you know what? Maybe my money will be better going in this direction by giving to an organization, or organizations that will help these individuals to basically meet the goals and objectives that you're trying, that you just mentioned.
Mayor?
Uh, like a record is like, that the city does have an outreach program. Uh, on a weekly basis, uh, they reach out, uh, to individuals in, in these encampments, uh, and offer services to them, services that include, uh, a shelter bed, uh, or motel voucher. Uh, we ha- also have, uh, uh, these pilot shelter homes and, and, uh, I believe 30 will be, uh, in an operational lead in this weekend, I think. Um, further, uh, questions or comments?
Yes, for, I'm, tried five times.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Um, you, to the question of the money, I mean, it is negligible, um, spending this on the signage. And, you know, I think it's a crime if you deface signs, so maybe, um, I don't know, maybe Councilmember Zavonic wants to throw people in jail for defacing signs, we could add that as well. But, um, but seriously, uh, it is a safety issue, and are we gonna wait until someone is killed? And then we go, oh my God, we, you know, we didn't even try to have an educational campaign out there to protect the, both the drivers and the panhandlers. So it, to me, it's an urgent need from, from a safety perspective. Um, and I, I, I don't understand the opposition and the try, the delay, to, you know, let's get the, all this data before this goes. Um, as Councilmember Lawson said, we are simply doing an educational campaign.
Further discussion? I see none as a objection, uh, uh, to moving, um, sorry. Item number, um, who, where are we? Oh, item number five, eight, forward?
Medina.
I'm sorry. That's, uh, objection, uh, Councilmember McConnell objects?
That was Medina. I also object, and I'm just gonna say this should be brought to committee for a more robust discussion.
McConnell, Medina. Further objection?
Coombs?
Councilmember Coombs? Further objection?
Woody O.
Woody O. Further objection? Uh, item number five able to move forward? Uh, seeing no other business, uh, before the Aurora City Council, this study session is adjourned. Thank you.